Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Regular meeting of the City Council. I know we have some people in the audience, but I don't know if we got anybody that wants to address the council at this time. If not, we'll move on into the agenda. Okay. Apologies for delay. It's been hard to get this to pull up. I think we've got a correction on the diesel generator bid. Who wants to speak then?
Eric's not here, Mayor, but I'll speak to it. It was brought up at the last council meeting, and I think he said the cost was going to be $48,700, but I think it's a missed typo, or I think he left out that it's going to be $48,790.
$90.
$90 difference.
Okay. Now, I guess we should correct the motion, and I have a re-vote again to approve it.
Yes.
Correct the price with the corrected process. I think Councilman Sheckles, I think you made that motion the last time to approve the alter bid for Wayne Supplies of the 400K W Diesel.
If we're talking being ordered, Mayor, I would like to revise that recommended bid from the 400-kilowatt diesel generator from $48,700 to the correct amount, $48,790.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Due to a typographical error, the zero looked like a nine, and nine looked like a zero. I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, we have a second. With Councilman Williams, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. Audrey, we've got a few CLAs from the HRB. I know we have some recusals. I guess we'll go ahead and read them first, and then make the recuse prior to the vote.
Okay. Is that how you want to go through all of them, Mayor? There are two that Councilman Doams is recusing and two that Councilman Buckman is recusing.
Correct.
All right.
Okay. We need to read the summaries.
Yes. I'm not going to read all the minutes, I promise. I won't keep this here forever. CLA 19-03, David Erickson, applicant/owner, request to install signage at 212 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed sign. CLA 19-04, Mrs. Cresso, applicant/owner, request to install a new sign at 118 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed sign with the following conditions. Conditions: If there is to be a second sign installed, it will be staff-approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-05, Debbie Parrish, applicant/owner, request to install a new sign at 210 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed sign with the following conditions. Conditions: The second sign will be staff-approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-06, Tim Bowling, applicant, David Mandel, owner, propose to install a new storm door at 210 North Fourth Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed storm door. CLA 19-07, Dawn Parrish, applicant, St. Joseph Church, Princess Archdiocese of Louisville, owner, request to alter the parking lot at 310 West Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to alter the parking lot with the proposed design with the following conditions. Conditions: The fence will be relocated on the property. CLA 19-08, Dawn Parrish, applicant, St. Joseph Church, Princess Archdiocese of Louisville, owner, request to change the landscaping at 310 West Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed landscaping with the following conditions. Conditions: Any changes to the landscaping plan will be approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-09, Moschtricken. CLA 18-22, JTD Holdings LLC, applicant/owner, propose to install windows at 105 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed windows. CLA 18-25, JTD Holdings LLC, applicant/owner, propose to install columns at 105 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed columns. CLA 19-10, Daryl Hawkins, applicant/owner, proposes to demolish a rear addition at 208 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to demolish the proposed addition of the house. CLA 19-11, Daryl Hawkins, applicant/owner, proposes to add a rear addition at 208 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval for the proposed rear addition. CLA 19-12, Daryl Hawkins, applicant/owner, proposes to add new windows to a rear addition at 208 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed windows. CLA 19-13, Daryl Hawkins, applicant/owner, proposes to add new siding to a rear addition at 208 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed wood siding. CLA 19-14, Daryl Hawkins, applicant/owner, proposes to add a new roof to a rear addition at 208 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed shingles. CLA 19-15, Daryl Hawkins, applicant/owner, proposes to add new doors to a rear addition at 208 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed doors. CLA 19-16, Daryl Hawkins, applicant/owner, proposes to reconstruct the front porch and walkway at 208 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to reconstruct the front porch and walkway as proposed. CLA 19-17, Daryl Hawkins, applicant/owner, proposes to add new light fixtures at 208 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed lighting with the following conditions. Conditions: The size of the front porch light fixture will be staff-approved. CLA 19-18, Daryl Hawkins, applicant/owner, proposes to add landscaping and remove trees at 208 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to remove the two proposed trees with the following conditions. Conditions: Two trees will be planted to replace the trees that will be removed, and they will be approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-19, Daryl Hawkins, applicant/owner, proposes to add gutters at 208 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed gutters. CLA 19-20, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to relocate the house at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to relocate the house to the proposed location with the following conditions. Conditions: The applicant agrees, number one, to use the utmost care in relocating the home based on the arduousness of the relocation process; number two, to maintain the home based on the standards of the National Register of Historic Places; number three, that the home will remain a residential structure; number four, the reason for the relocation is for the new construction as proposed. CLA 19-21, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to demolish the gas station at 122 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to demolish the proposed structure. CLA 19-22, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to construct the new gas station. CLA 19-23, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station and add windows at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed windows with the following conditions. Conditions: The final design of the windows and surrounding area will be approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-24, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station with Yorktown brick at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed brick with the following conditions. Conditions: The brick design will be Flemish bond, and the mortar color will be staff-approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-25, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station with shingles on the roof and canopy at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed shingles. CLA 19-26, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station and paint portions of the building at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval of the proposed paint colors. CLA 19-27, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station, soffit, trim, and cornices, at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed soffit, trim, and cornices with the following conditions. Conditions: The materials, colors, and final design of the soffits, trim, and cornices will be staff-approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-28, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station and add shutters at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed shutters with the following conditions. Conditions: The applicant will have the material, hardware, and installation of the shutters approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-29, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station and add doors at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed doors with the following conditions. Conditions: The final design of the doors will be staff-approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-30, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station and add a limestone foundation at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the limestone foundation with the following conditions. Conditions: The color of the materials and the layout of the limestone that is displayed will have a larger dimension. The final design will be approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-31, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station and add sidewalks at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed sidewalks with the following conditions. Conditions: The applicant will use the washed and irrigated design they currently have on any new and additional sidewalks around the new facility. CLA 19-32, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station and add landscaping at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed landscaping with the following conditions. Conditions: Any tree removal in the city right-of-way must be approved by the city tree board. CLA 19-33, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station and add signage at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval of the proposed signage with the following conditions. Conditions: The applicant will receive staff approval for the lighting of both the mounted and freestanding sign, as well as the brick design for the freestanding sign. CLA 19-34, Newcombe Oil Company, applicant/owner, request to construct a new gas station and add lighting at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed lighting with the following conditions. Conditions: The applicant seeks staff approval by the preservation coordinator for all of the lighting on the project.
Is that it?
I think so.
Thank you, Audrey. I guess, David, since the one applying to St. Joseph Church is, I think, on the -- no, excuse me, I think, yeah, the one for St. Joseph Church is pushing out, so it's 18 --
So --
19-7 and 19-8.
Correct.
So if you would want to recuse yourself, you would take those up first. David serves on that committee that oversees the names of some parish properties, recusing himself, so if I could, I'd ask for a motion then to approve the recommendation on CLA 19-07, St. Joseph Church, and also 19-08 for St. Joseph Church.
So, Mayor, with the conditions attached?
The motion of Councilman Buckman with the conditions on 19-07 and 08. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? I would just say that not only is this -- it's going to be a terrific improvement aesthetically, but it also comes into play with some work we've had discussions on with the state trying to improve the 31E and 62 intersection in front of the church, and there's some studies, traffic studies, about making, perhaps making that a three-way lighting, but in the study we found, you know, there's a lot of stacking problems if you try to exit off of 62 or Stephen Foster and turn into St. Joseph Church, like to pick up your children in the afternoon, there's a great deal of problem, so by this entrance being moved further north, that's going to help. The significance of the state, I think, would like that change from a standpoint of safety and the stacking issue that we encountered there, so just wanted to point that out, because we've had some discussions with him on this, with the state as well. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. And then Joe will take up, recuse yourself, will take up CLA 15-22 and then 25. Okay. Good. Since Councilman Buckman's accused himself, so could I have a motion then to approve the recommendations from the HRB on CLA 18-22 and 25?
So, Mayor.
A motion of Councilman Hems, has a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Sheckles, is there any discussion? Seeing none, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. All right, so I think what's remaining then is CLA 19-03, 4, 5, and 6, and then CLA 19-10 through 34. This one, I'm going to correct it. I think that's -- I took notes as we were doing it, so could I have a motion then to approve the recommendations for CLA 19-03, 4, 5, and 6, and CLA 19-10 through 34?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve the aforementioned CLAs with the stipulations and set forth by the HRB.
And the conditions.
And the conditions.
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a motion by Councilman Doams and a second by Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion? I think, Rashay, I guess, one question that we probably want some clarification, though, is I think a lot of people are asking, is the application by the Newcombe Oil Company on this, how does it differ from the previous application that was denied, that HRB has found that this application does meet the criteria on the project?
Yes, Mayor. So the previous applications were for economic hardship, and the board did not feel that the particular property or the stipulations that were provided meant that. So what has happened at this point is Newcombe Oil Company is proposing to relocate the structure, and so therefore the board took that into consideration, and also we contacted the Kentucky Heritage Council. The contacts there were the National Register Coordinator, as well as the CLG Coordinator for the state. They wrote back and seeing the new proposed construction and what Newcombe Oil was going to put back in its location, and they felt that the design was very sympathetic and appropriate for our historic district, and they commended Bardstown on its work to allow the historic district to continue upright and to do such a great job in preserving its integrity. And so therefore, with all of those things taken into consideration, the board felt that this application was appropriate in context with the Secretary of the Interior's standards, the federal guidelines of preservation, as well as the state guidelines for preservation, once that those correspondents came back and they were supporting this project.
And I think the previous application also had included not only hardship and demolition, whereas this one is a relocation.
Correct.
Which is also better useful, I think, for where I ran it all through the minutes.
Absolutely, and the state felt so as well.
Any other discussion on any of these CLAs, their motion and the second?
No, good, Mr. Mayor, please. Just sticking to this project for Rashay, if I could, for the council, since I'm not sure, did anybody, we didn't get a chance to see drawings, anybody see those? Okay. I would just like to be assured myself that it's going to be, when the building is completed, that it's going to be the kind of building that Bardstown expects to see on that lot. And what I mean by that is it is definitely a great idea, I love everything about it. I just want to be concerned and assured that, like, detail, drawings, like, say, on the front entry, the windows, that kind of thing, I'm not sure that there's enough there on paper for you that could, could we see that that happens, maybe?
Absolutely. You can also put that, you know, whatever you need to do as well. I've been in contact with Daniel quite a bit, and with the conditions set forth, what basically a lot of the conditions are stipulating with this project is that the final approval, full drawings, scale drawings, the measurements, the details, a lot of that would be handled by me, and so I would work with Daniel and Newcombe Oil Company in order to finalize those, so that when you do look at the building, you don't think you see a new construction. I want you to think you see an 1800s federal-style building, so we are going to work together to ensure that that happens.
So it's going to be more, like, in traditional scaling and that type of thing?
Yes.
Just like maybe the lintels of the windows and things of that nature?
Yes.
Yeah.
There are stipulations, too. A lot of it was discussed between Daniel and I prior to the HRB meetings, such as there will be trim work around the windows three to four inches. The lintels, we have talked about as well, need to be rediscussed. The design of the door, no brick needs to be exposed. Minute details right there that will be handled according to the specifications I provide, but also that would make the building appropriate and make it seem seamless with the other buildings that are located on that street. The entire portion and the whole, the whole part of this is to basically allow the building to seem like it's a variation through time, that it flows right through the historic context of that street and the other buildings that are present there.
Just for your, for you.
Yes.
I really think that some of that needs to be drawn, and we need to make sure you have some drawings. I know we do that, we've done that many times in the past, especially on projects that are, like, front and center like this, that are so out there, you know, because you make the kind of wrong move here, then not only does it mess your building up, but it's not what we kind of expect.
Absolutely.
So I think for you to be able to, to watch this project, you need something to go by, more detailed. Some of those features need to be more detailed, I think.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. And I believe, you know, your preliminary lines of that and agree with that as well.
Anything else, Joe? No. Any other questions or discussion?
And would you remind me where that contributing building is going to be relocated?
107 West Mar Avenue.
Besides, yeah.
On that empty lot located right there.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, Rashay, and thank you, Audrey. I know there's a lot of work on it. Been on a busy night last year, so did a lot of work, and now getting all this together. Thank you for your help on that. All right, next we have correspondents regarding the sidewalk variance. Jessica, if you'd like to address, Council, you all had a chance to read the letter from Mr. Ballard, the developer of Tullmore.
Yes, this is essentially a request for dedication of the final completion or extension of Menaham Lane that completes the cul-de-sac that had previously been a temporary cul-de-sac, and basically makes that permanent termination to the street and that right-of-way dedication. And in order to move forward with that approval and that plating process, there were a few variance requests that were needed to kind of move forward that process in order to do so. One was sidewalks, asking for a variance on sidewalks, and the existing street in the residential section has carbon gutter, and it's creating, not extending that carbon gutter on over the fill section and into the industrial frontage site of the cul-de-sac. And as long, they've addressed their drainage and from a street design process, they've met our requirements or needs for how that street's going to drain and perform, and then in addition, keeping the width the same for consistency and continuity. This development started out from the county, so it was 24-foot or 24-foot wide streets, and we're going to just maintain that through, for consistency and congruency. And that's essentially what this is, is just cleaning up some of those. It's a little bit unique because of the history of where this is, but this allows a permanent public street with the cul-de-sac, so that the existing residents along Menaham Lane, we can get our garbage trucks turn around, emergency services, snowplows, those kinds of things. So this is just kind of those requests to finalize that process.
Any other discussion then after we have our motion? I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve the waiver request from Tullmore Subdivision on Menaham Lane cul-de-sac. Heard the letter and Jessica's description of the request.
Is that a motion?
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hart and a second by Councilman Buckman. Is there any discussion or questions?
Jessica, so the neighbors in the neighborhood and so forth, is everybody fine with this that lives on that street? And is it good? And developers fine here?
I haven't heard specifically myself from any of the residents, but I know that early on in some of the original discussions, when Lux Row moved in and that was going to be adjacent, you know, those residential homes were adjacent to this property, there was some concern about traffic and making sure they didn't have a cut-through, and this, those conditions that were put on that property are still in place, but it allows the neighbors that wanted that street to kind of be finished, that, that completion. So I think from my understanding of what the goal was, they're, I think they're happy that that's moving forward and that's happening now, that that street's getting completed. It's not going to be maintained as just a temporary, it's going to be finalized and folks have a safe place to turn around and services can be provided appropriately.
And Joe, I'll scope into a couple of residents out there, and they're, they're happier about the fact that it is going to be terminated and that that can't be used as a cut-through, as you just said, for Lux Row or from any of those other properties that, that could increase the traffic through there, so they're not opposed to this because of, merely because of that.
I had some similar conversations, that they're happy to get this, to this point where it'll be finished, and it was kind of unique because, you know, it's, the cul-de-sac, a typical cul-de-sac would be enjoyed by property owners, like residential property, but this one, this is unique in that it won't be serving any property owners, and thus the waiver, I think, makes sense, because the cul-de-sac's really on private property and not part of the development, you know, the circular part of it, the balance of the street will have sidewalks, a curb and gutter till the, I guess, the end of the development.
You mean, it'll be dedicated right away, in a dedicated street, but the end of this street is now served all the frontages as industrial development that's not really having an access point. So that's kind of what makes it a little different, whereas usually it would stop. And it's just kind of the nature of how this property and the overall development evolved. You know, I think at one point in time it was considered that this would be a continuation of a residential development, you know, on the other side, and then obviously times, things change over time, and we've got the property sold in this now Lux Row. So I think this is a win-win for the residents on the residential side, and it kind of finalizes that without them jeopardizing any accessibility and emergency service and garbage pickup, you know, those things can still occur safely, so.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Your neighbors are going to be happy.
That's good. I like it, man. He's like a happy tree.
Okay. Everybody's had a chance to review the minutes in the regular council meeting, and approve that by unanimous consent, unless there are any corrections or additions. None to change. All right, the next item is the Human Rights Commission has submitted their financial report from last year and then their proposed budget for this coming year. I think we have to approve their proposed budget. I think we have to approve their proposed budget. And as you can see, they gave some pretty good detail, they've got a pretty large carryover balance of last year, which will help them beat their budget this year, and then the city and the county will be making their annual contributions for the Human Rights Commission.
I'll make, Mayor, I'll approve the, the proposed financial report for the Bardstown-Deniston County Human Rights Commission, as proposed.
We have a motion for approval of annual budget for the Human Rights Commission. I have a second.
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
I have a second by Councilman Jones. Is there any discussion or questions? Similar, if you looked at their last year stuff, kind of similar, similar budget items and events that they have planned, so. No further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motions carried, thank you.
You vote on the Human Rights Commission?
Reports from staff, the committees, we have an appointment that's open at Wickland with former Mayor Hibs is stepping off that board, but we don't, we don't know where she'll be going, but we know she's going to be going in a lot of other directions, so we need to find a replacement, since now Ms. Fulkerson is taking former Mayor Hibs's place as the board chairman, and all the, what'd you call it? Curator? Curator, director?
Uh-huh.
So we need to find a replacement for Ms. Fulkerson, and so Rashay Jennings has agreed to serve, so I would make a motion, or I would, I would ask to consider appointing Rashay Jennings to take Ms. Fulkerson's place on the board from the Friends of Wickland.
I'd like to make a motion there.
For his admission?
Yes. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Rashay Jennings to the Wickland Board.
Okay, and then...
Before I second it, are we sure she's qualified? I'll second that motion, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to appoint Rashay Jennings to the Friends of Wickland Board, replacing Ms. Fulkerson, who's now handling up that facility. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motions carried. Then, we've got some more Human Rights Commission, we have five members in the Human Rights Commission that their terms are coming up March 1st, and all of these appointees currently serve on that board and have agreed to continue to serve, that would be Mary Jane Greenwell, Janet Tong, Karen Scout, Carrie Stivers, and Pat Whalen. And I would ask for approval of reappointing those individuals to the Human Rights Commission effective March 1st.
Mayor, if I'm in order, having served on that commission, I'd like to vote to reappoint those individuals to the Human Rights Commission effective 3/1/2019.
Okay, we have a motion for the reappointments, I have a second.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Hibs. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motions carried, thank you. Okay. Last item, or excuse me, the next item is the request for a tax moratorium by Daryl Hawkins for 208 East Stephen Foster. Tracy, do you want to speak to that, or you want me to keep talking about it?
You probably know more about it than I do, I just know they get a five-year, they reduce their assessment for five years by a certain dollar amount, but they also have to put that dollar amount back in renovations, as we understood it.
These are available in the historic district whereby the increased hours and result of renovations doesn't get assessed for a period of five years to encourage the investment. So they have, I guess, up to that period of time, then it'll be reassessed after five years to reflect the amount of new renovations and so forth in the process. We get this pretty often in the historic district, so as you can see, Mr. Hawkins estimated he's going to put $100,000 into that property, if you saw the HRB things, quite extensive what he's going to do to that property there on East Stephen Foster. An ask for motion then to approve the moratorium request for 208 East Stephen Foster by Mr. Hawkins.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion by Councilman Jones, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Shephels, is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motions carried, thank you. Any of the council members have anything they want to bring before the council this evening? Anything rocking on, or any news?
Mayor, I'm on it. Chief Kresic and I met this morning to discuss the formation of a drug coalition. We have a wonderful model from Hamilton, Ohio, from a police chief up there, and has formed one. We are meeting next week with a group called United for Recovery. I've seen something in the paper about this newly-formed group, and then we're also meeting with the lady from Path Coalition. There's no reason, we feel like to double our efforts, so we're just going to all get together and see what we need to do together to address the drug issue that we have. So, United for Recovery has a public meeting already planned, it's next Tuesday night at 8 o'clock at the library, and they've invited the general public to attend to just kind of discuss and brainstorm with what we can do, so.
United incorporates your meeting, I mean...
I'm sorry?
You incorporate your meeting within the meeting?
We're meeting, we have city council next week, and so between city council meeting and that meeting, Chief Kresic and I are meeting with Willis Thoreau and, can't remember the lady's name, Tammy, with United for Recovery in between those two meetings, the four of us, and then she's taking it into a public forum. So if you want to join us for the in-between meeting and then come for the later, that's fine too, but any experience or input or anything that we have, Chief Kresic has a very good background, you know, in working with narcotics, so I think it's something that our community needs, so we're...
You're going to meet here?
We're meeting at the library.
I mean, before the other meeting?
At the library.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll meet here for city council at 5, and then we meet over there at 6:45.
Thank you, Betty, and thank you for, I know this has been something that's been on your mind and something that you have been wanting to work on since you decided to run for council, now that you're on the council, glad you're putting this effort to work on. And then it's great that maybe three organizations might be able to collaborate.
Absolutely.
Major problem that we have.
We're strong.
Hopefully get a county-wide effort, not just city-only.
Yeah, I've talked with Sheriff, the sheriff too, and he's definitely interested in working with us together, so we're stronger together.
Any other council members have anything to bring before the council this evening? And then we have, next item, we have cemetery deeds, we have two graves for Elmer Downs, approve that by unanimous consent. All ours announcements, I don't think we have any, Betty, other than you just mentioned are being next week, people want to attend at 8 o'clock, library for this drug coalition. If there's no other thing to come before the council, I'd ask for a motion for adjournment.
So, look.
Motion by Councilman Buckman, second.
Second.
Councilman Williams. That's going to be driving our count.
Got it good there, Tom.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?